Good evening. It's 7:02. We'll call a meeting to order. All members are present. We'll begin with the transmitting of Treasury Warrants 33, 33A, 34, and 34A. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Made in second and all in favor. It's unanimous. Then move to the approval of the minutes of December 10, 2012, and January 14, 2013. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve the minutes as for December 10th and January 14.
Second.
Made in second and anything further? All in favor? It's unanimous. Our first appointment this evening scheduled for 7 o'clock is with Robert G. Peterson, Esquire. It's regarding a request for a waiver and restriction agreement for the property located at 16 Dewey Avenue. Good evening, Counselor.
Good evening, Chairman Newhouse.
If I could just quickly before turning the floor over to Attorney Peterson, I just want to disclose that I have a professional association with a party of interest to this case, so I'm going to abstain from the discussion and end the vote, and I'd just ask Mr. McCoy to chair this portion of the meeting from his seat. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Bob. How are you doing tonight?
Good evening, Chairman McCoy and members of the board.
Good. The floor is yours. You want to explain to the board what you're looking to do?
Ladies and gentlemen may recall, I was here two weeks ago with a situation on a deed that contained the standard two restrictive covenants that the town put on deeds for years when they sold low-value tax property. Those deeds contained two restrictions, one which prohibited in perpetuity the subdivision of the property, and the idea of that was to make sure that anybody that bought town property at less than fair market value and didn't turn around and subdivide it and sell it. The second restriction in that deed, which is why I'm here this evening, prohibited the use of that town property for any use other than the extension of the then-existing dwelling. And very simply, when you take that dwelling down, that restriction taken in context would prohibit that owner or any successor entitled from taking that dwelling down and building a new one. And I know I indicated to the board two weeks ago that I hadn't run into this situation in 26 years, and I've run into two of them in the last 30 days. So what I would ask the board, I believe the original release, which is very similar to the one you executed two weeks ago, I gave the original to Bev before the meeting started, and I have reviewed it with Mr. Ross. He did ask for additional information, additional documents with this release because it's being executed by the trustee of a trust. He did ask me to prepare a separate certificate, which I have, and I've had the buyer execute, and it's been approved by Mr. Ross as well.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Peterson. I personally don't see an issue with it. Is there any questions from the board members?
Just about timing, if I may. I think you might have said this two weeks ago when you first brought this to our attention. Why is it that it's coming to light now and you think you even kind of forewarned us that we'll be seeing you more often, which is pleasant and all, but why is it coming up so frequently?
I think a lot of these restrictions were on dwellings that were older, even back then in the '70s. This particular dwelling is a cottage-style dwelling, as was the last one. The original deed, the property was purchased by the original owners in the '50s. They purchased the additional parcel from the town in the '70s. So the house itself, even when the additional parcel was purchased, Mike, was probably 50 years old. So the house is probably approaching 100 years old now.
Okay.
And it really comes into play when the dwelling that was in existence, when the purchase was made, is removed because that restriction, the second restriction, technically prohibits the removal of the existing dwelling.
So it's not an expiration in terms of a calendar date as much as it, or it's really related to the fact that as these houses now come out of, or as the properties want to change hands, we'll start to see that more and more frequently. Is that accurate?
Correct. There is, as I indicated before, there were two restrictions. One prohibits the subdivision of the property. There is a question as to whether that particular restriction may in fact have expired, which is why when the agreements approved here by the board, Mr. Ross has made sure that the new owner is A specifically aware of that restriction and B assents to the continuation of that restriction, which would last for at least another 30 years. And having said that, with this parcel and with the parcel I was here on two weeks ago, it would have been physically impossible to subdivide any of them because there wasn't enough area to subdivide into two lots. This is a 9,600-square-foot parcel in an R10 zone, so it's already non-conforming, so to physically subdivide it would be impossible.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, Neil.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Any, I'm sorry, go ahead, Judy.
No questions.
I'm sorry.
Makes perfect sense.
Yeah, I totally agree. Any questions from the audience at all? All right, being there's no questions from the audience, is there a motion from the board to request a waiver and restriction agreement relative to 16 Dewey Ave?
Yeah, I make that motion as read, Mr. Joe.
Motion by Selectman, yeah, Semard.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Selectman O'Connell. All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
There's a vote of four and with one abstention, Chairman Newhouse.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. 7:05 appointment is scheduled with David Omahaoni, and it's regarding a request to use the Town Common and gazebo on Sunday, April 7, 2013, at 1:30 p.m. for the purpose of conducting a unity rally. Good evening, Mr. Omahaoni. Thank you.
Mr. Newhouse, good evening. Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for having me. I'm sure, as you're all aware, three different churches in town were the victims of some pretty nasty vandalism. And in the wake of that, the question that you're left with after the initial shock is, what do you do? And one of the things that my church, St. Thomas's, has done through their outreach coordinators, particularly Pat Archfield, is she's been in contact with the community of churches here in town. I know specifically the United Methodist Church and the Congregational Church and my own parish, which is St. Thomas of Villanova. And the thought was to have a show of unity. And to that end, we asked that we be granted use of the gazebo on the Town Common on that date that Mr. Newhouse had said that April 7th date. And the idea would be that members of the community, specifically the churches and others, would have an opportunity to have a peaceful and a prayerful rally, which would address the issue of the vandalism and perhaps more generally the idea of, you know, respecting the freedoms that we do in this country, that we do enjoy, the freedom of religion. And in this rally, we'll be enjoying the freedom of assembly to kind of come together, regardless of faith, you know, it's open to all. Even people of no faith, I'm sure, would see this for what it is, which is a pretty terrible act that caused a lot of damage and hurt a lot of people, as you might be aware. On that morning at St. Thomas's, we had two funerals scheduled. So the parents of people who lost loved ones, who that day were burying loved ones, were greeted with a pretty nasty attack on their faith. And so the hope is that the rally will be a source of healing for the community, a source of reflection for not only the people that were victims, but maybe even for the people that perpetrated the attack, to see kind of what their acts entailed and how they hurt people, but beyond that, how the community, a community as strong as Wilmington comes together when people are hurt, regardless of, you know, whether or not it's your church or your faith. And so that's the goal of the rally.
Thank you for that information and explanation of what the rally is intended to do. Do we have any questions, comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, I totally agree and total cowards that did that. I remember Selectman Shampoo ran that up at the last meeting, and I agree with everything Selectman Shampoo said at that meeting, and I think he made it quite clear, it's just very sad.
Anything else?
Yeah, I just, I don't want to repeat the dissertation I gave at our last meeting, but I just want to commend you and the people that you represent from St. Thomas, but also representing all of the faith organizations in town who have volunteered and will be participating. And obviously, I'm going to be voting in favor of this. I'll stipulate, or I guess I'll make clear, that I'm a part of the St. Thomas Parish too, and I was affected personally and angered by what happened in town that day. So I thank you for bringing this to light. I thank you and the rest of the committee for assembling this event, and I hope that it will be a very well-attended event and illustrates to those that did this that it only makes us stronger as a community and as an interfaith community regardless of what your faith is. So thank you for being here and for explaining it and putting it together.
Okay. At that, do we have a motion?
Sure, yeah. I would move that we grant approval to David Omahaoni and the organization that he represents for use of the Town and gazebo on April 7, Sunday, at 1:30 for the purpose of conducting a unity rally.
Second.
Made in second and anything further? All in favor? It's unanimous? Thank you again. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Our 7:10 appointment is scheduled with Sharon A. George, the town clerk. It's regarding a scheduling of local election and special election for U.S. Senate. At this point, oddly enough, this comes a second time in one night, I've had a discussion both with my colleague on the board, Mr. Smaglia, as well as with town council. We're pretty clear that it wouldn't be an ethical violation to participate in this discussion even though that we're up for reelection at that particular election. Notwithstanding that, I think that it makes sense to step back and allow the rest of the board to make this decision. I think there's some folks who might analyze whether or not there's an advantage or a disadvantage to a particular day and a particular way of running an election, et cetera, and without getting into that analysis myself, I'd just as soon abstain from this discussion. I think it's Mr. Smaglia's intention to do the same, right? So I'd again ask Mr. McCoy, if he could, please chair this portion of the agenda. I appreciate it.
Mr. Newhouse, and I'll say, you know, relative to what you just stated, I agree with you, Chairman Newhouse, that I don't think you, Mr. Smaglia should abstain from it, but that's your right to do so. So, Madam Clerk, how are you this evening? And the floor is all yours.
Good. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Last week in your packet, you received a memo outlining everything that kind of would happen with concurrent elections. It would be treated as two separate elections on the Tuesday, and we would have to have two ballots. We would have our normal town ballot, and then we would have the state primary ballot. And the machines would be calibrated for both ballots. So at the end of the night, there would be tapes for both of the election results, for both of the town election and the state primary that would be posted. And the biggest thing I feel is vote of convenience, that not having to have people come out three times in one week. We have the Saturday election for the town election. We would have a Tuesday election for the state primary, and then town meeting the following Saturday. So within eight days, we're asking voters to come out three times to, you know, to vote and also to attend the town meeting. So I feel that by running concurrent elections, I feel that our voters would appreciate that. So rather than having to come out to two separate elections three days apart, that they only have to come out once. The second consideration, of course, is cost. And by running concurrent elections, we do save money because all of the costs on Saturday for the town election is all time and a half for custodians, police, let's see, my staff. So it cuts the overtime down considerably. Okay? And I think really that's all that Superintendent Joanne Benton has said that she will close the school, the Boutwell and the Wildwood, because they are both kindergarten schools. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I would like, if possible, for you to take a vote this evening because just for all the statutory requirements that I have to abide by, the greatest amount of lead time would help me and my staff be able to set up for the election, for two elections on one day. And I am happy to answer any questions.
Well, thank you, Madam Clerk. I totally agree 100% everything that you are presenting before the board. Number one, vote of convenience, as you stated. Number two, cost. Going to save the town some money, and you're right, why have the folks come back two, three times if that's their intent to do that? Any questions from the board, the membership at all?
No, I concur with what you just said, Mike.
Any questions from the audience at all? All right, then, if there's a motion, if anybody would like to make a motion relative to what the Madam Clerk is looking to do, if they would entertain that. You don't need to look at the dates, right? So that would be, that would clear, the election would be on Tuesday, correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
And the date would be, just tell us?
April 30th.
April 30th. That would be the town election and the special election.
And, yes.
Okay, so April 30th is the date.
And the voting polling hours would be 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. So we can open the town election at the same time as the state primary. So that adds an hour, and I believe that that may increase our voter turnout also.
I agree. I think you see a bigger turnout, and I think that's great for the community. So now that we know the dates and the hours that the Madam Clerk has stated, is there a motion to that effect?
Sure. I'll lob it out there. I will make the motion that we approve a concurrent election on Tuesday, April 30th. Polls opening at 7:00 and closing at 8:00 for the state primary as well as our local elections.
Second.
Motion made by Selectman Shampoo, second by Selectman O'Connell. All those in favor? The vote is three to zero with two abstentions, Selectman Smaglia and Selectman Chairman Newhouse.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you.
Thank you again, Ms. McCoy. 7:20 discussion item is a preliminary discussion of annual town meeting nonpetition warrant articles. Mr. Hull?
Just to review the draft warrant, at this point, we have Article 1, which is the article to reference the ballot with respect to positions. There are two selectmen positions with terms of three years, three members of the board of the school committee for terms of three years, one member of the housing authority for a five-year term, and one member of the regional vocational technical school for a term of three years. Also, within Article 1, there's reference to the annual town meeting, which will be taking place on May 4 at 10:30. This year, it's, as you know, the venue will change from the high school to the middle school, so the town meeting will be held in the middle school auditorium on May 4. Article 2 is the regular article to hear reports from committees. Article 3 is again another routine article requesting authorization to pay any unpaid bills. Article 4 authorizes the treasurer collector to enter into agreements with banks doing business in the Commonwealth for a term of not to exceed three years and to maintain funds on deposit. Article 5 is again the article that comes up every year with regard to the line item Article 6 is the capital, request for capital items. We're requesting four replacement police vehicles, one ambulance, one one-ton truck for the public buildings department, one heavy-duty dump truck in the public works department, one pickup truck, one multi-use tractor, and one skid steerall for the public works department, and then one student transport van for the school department. Article 7 is a request for funds to conduct conceptual and schematic design work and cost estimates for the development of the Entile Farm property for recreational purposes. Article 8 is a request for funds to remove two existing oil-fired burners, or boilers, rather, and replace them with two gas-fired boilers at the North Intermediate School. Article 9 is a request for funds to supplement the funds that were approved at last year's annual town meeting for replacement of windows at the North Intermediate School. Article 10 is a request for funds to replace approximately 9,800 square feet of roof area at the West Intermediate School. Article 11 is an article to request funds for the miscellaneous facilities improvement account. This is a fund that's used for any number of public buildings-related issues that may come up during the course of the year that are of an emergent nature. Article 12 is, deals with the recreation areas, replacement of fencing at the North Intermediate School, at the tennis court area, and then also resealing of the tennis court and basketball courts at the Shawshin School.
Mr. Hull, may I interrupt you? I'm sorry.
Sure.
Will we have on the March 19 Finance Committee Planning Board joint committee public hearing? Is that when we'll get a cent of the dollars associated with some of these that you've read so far and that you're going to read on?
Yes, yeah, that information will all be available at that time. Thank you. Article 13 is a request to replace the base communication radio at the fire department, in the fire department. Article 14 is another fire department item. It's a request to replace the self-contained breathing apparatus fill station, which is currently in place at the station, so that would be a replacement. Article 15 is with regarding a technology, and it's a request to purchase equipment for the installation of wireless networks at the Boutwell, Wildwood, Shawshin, Woburn Street, North Intermediate, and West Intermediate Schools. Article 16 is a request to fund the purchase of 60 personal computers for use at the North and the West Intermediate Schools. Article 17 is a request, again, for technology improvements in the middle school, including replacement of core and intermediate distribution frame switches. Article 18 is a request to purchase 55 interactive smart boards for the Wilmington Middle School. Article 19 is the transfer article that occurs every year where, in the current fiscal year, fiscal 13 budget, to the extent that there are budgets that are, look like, or will be exceeding their budget-light items, there'll be requests to transfer money from other accounts that are in the surplus. Article 20 is a request to authorize the continued funding of the senior citizens' tax work-off program. Article 21 is a request for funds for the observance of Memorial Day and Veterans Day. Article 22 is a request for $750 for the purpose of renewing the lease at the, for the Veterans of Foreign War Clubhouse, the Kneel Ellsworth Post 2458. Article 23 is a request to authorize or reauthorize the revolving accounts. As you may recall, we've had a couple of revolving accounts, one being the compost bin program, the other the replacement, a grant program for septic tank replacement. Article 24 is a request for the town to amend the zoning bylaws specifically with regard to establishing a category or a usage for pet care facilities. Any proposed pet care facility shall contain a minimum of three of the following uses: boarding, grooming, retail sales related to pet products, veterinary care services, pet daycare, pet training classes, any other uses related to pet care not specifically delineated in this section, which in the opinion of the planning board complies with the intent and the purpose of the bylaw. Article 25 is associated with the previous article. This is a request to amend the bylaws, inhabitant bylaws, specifically Section 29, subsection D, to establish a category kennel license fee. The fee shall be in accordance with Chapter 1, Section 3 of the inhabitant bylaws, which sets out the process for establishing specific fees. Article 26 is also related, this article requests the rezoning from general industry to general business of a parcel of land situated at 203 Lowell Street. This is at the corner of Lowell Street and Woburn Street.
And, Mr. Hull, if I could, I see that Carol Hamilton is here directing planning and conservation. Carol, I presume that this isn't being done in a vacuum here. The town is on notice, there's a prospective use, and this is a manner of making sure that it's done in a way that's palatable to the town and makes sense from a planning perspective.
That's correct, Mr. Newhouse. We did have an applicant approach us. We're not able to accommodate them under the current zoning bylaw. And what we're looking for here, as you may have noticed in the article, is a facility that's a standalone building of substantial size. This is not a storefront. In fact, it would not be accommodated in a building that is attached to something else. So it's a fairly high-end facility, and it does provide multiple services for folks. There are some of these facilities in Massachusetts, but there are also some in New Hampshire. It's kind of a growing trend nationally. Pet services are becoming a fairly substantial business on their own. So we're looking for the higher end. We're not really looking for marginal use or somebody who is in it because they are transitioning from one kind of work to another. We're looking for someone who's committed to this as a career to provide services for domestic pets.
Okay, and I presume the planning board will put together a detailed presentation for the joint hearing on the, is it the 19th that Mr. Shampoo referenced?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Article 27 is... Article Twenty-seven is an article, again, looking to revise or, the zoning bylaws include interim regulations for medical marijuana use. As you know, the, based upon the ballot question that was passed last November, there are provisions to establish medical marijuana dispensaries. The Massachusetts Department of Public Health is currently in the process of developing regulations. Their initial deadline, I believe, was May 1st, although there's some discussion that that may be delayed. A number of communities have taken various actions, some passing zoning bylaws, eliminating or severely restricting these types of uses. Other communities have gone the route of the approach we're looking to take, which is essentially to establish a moratorium to allow the town to review the regulations that ultimately come out of this and respond in a appropriate and measured way so that we have some ability to influence the, where a facility might go if one should come to Wilmington. Article Twenty-eight is an article concerning the, would request to amend the inhabitant bylaws to establish a section that addresses criminal history check authorization. And this would involve fingerprint-based criminal history checks through the state and federal fingerprinting-based criminal history database. Individuals who are applying for the following types of licenses: hawk and pedal, pedaling licenses or other door-to-door salespeople, the manager of alcoholic beverage licenses, owner or operators of public conveyance, dealer or second, dealer of second-hand articles, hackney drivers and ice cream truck vendors. This is an article that the police chief and I have had some discussions about, and I'm not sure if the board, if there's interest in, if there's any questions on that, but...
I guess I would just simply point out that the police chief, Mike Gonis, is present. It's a, an article that the Board of Selectmen would sponsor, but certainly at the, at the guidance and advice of the manager and the police chief. So if you have anything to offer, by all means, otherwise, we'll, I'm sure that we'll hear from you at the public hearing.
Any questions now? I'd be happy to answer.
From the board at this point in time?
Generally, what precipitated it? What brings it to light now?
It's a good question, Mr. Shampoo. The Acts of 2010, signed by the governor, reformed Corin law. And in Corin law, they give certain parameters of how you can do background checks on folks. Right now, everything's based on kind of the local level, local and state background checks. This gives us an opportunity to look at the more transient door-to-door salesmen that come from other parts of the country in a kind of a one-fell-swoop background check, and it'll be supported by fingerprint data. What we're seeing a lot in current days is false IDs and things like that. So they can give us their name and address, we can do the best check we can do at this point, but it's not supported by any type of biographic information that we can get from the individuals. So, you know, I think this is a good move forward. It has a limited use, it's not for everybody. The information isn't stored over a long period of time. It's the, the data goes down to the FBI, gets a check. If there's a hit, it comes back, if not, it's erased at that point. So there's no, like, long-term database that stores the information that's sent down. In these things, I think it's critical to understand that, you know, we do background checks now. There's a new regulation that just came out in the CMAs in early January that requires this same check to be done by, on people who want to be ice cream vendors. And I think that we might have a difficulty being able to follow that if we don't have this ordinance or this bylaw in place to give us the opportunity to do that, enter into those agreements and be able to send the information down. Another situation now is just recently passed, has to do with daycare operators and folks like that for schools. Their employees and the owners have to go through the same type of fingerprint-verified background check. It's not clear as to who's going to have to do that, but the local chiefs, or I should say the master chiefs, think that there might be a venue where those people would come through the local police departments and proceed with those. So, you know, I think this is something that not only is a good idea in some aspects, but also going to be required in a couple others. So I think that it's best the town consider it and make a decision as to if this is how they want to move forward.
Thanks, Chief, I appreciate it. I'm sure they have an opportunity to tell that story again in a couple of weeks.
Sure.
Thank you.
Anything else up here?
Good. Article 29, this begins the petition articles. This article was submitted by Mark Nelson. He's seeking to purchase town-owned property map six, parcel 18, more specifically described as lots 180, 181, 182, 183, containing approximately 11,700 square feet of land. Article 30, again, petitioned by Mark Nelson, looking to purchase property on map six, parcel 18, lots 177, 178, 179, approximately 96, 9,688 square feet. Article 31, to see if the town will sell town-owned land located on map six, parcel 16. This is Page Street. The petitioner is James Walsh, Diane Colasi, and others. Article 32 is a petition article submitted by James Castellano. He's looking to rezone from residential 60 to residential 20, property on, off of Hopkins Street. Article 33 is, the petitioner is Rena Watney. She is seeking to acquire town-owned property. This is off of Lawrence Street. Article 34, the petitioner is George Linganfelter. This is a request to amend the bylaws, inhabitant bylaws, with respect to fencing. Similar article was brought to the town last year. Article 35, the petitioners are Mark and Lisa Esposito, looking to rezone from R 60 to residential 10, parcels three, five, and seven on Dorchester Street and 52 Hopkins Street. Article 36, the petitioner is Douglas Marsubian. He's looking to rezone from residential 60 to residential 20, property located at 10 Royal Street. Article 37, the petitioner is Jonathan Cullis. He's seeking to, for the town to sell property on Central Street, on specifically map 52, parcel 34. Article 38, the petitioner is Aereo Realty LLC, seeking to amend the zoning bylaws, section 3.8.9, minimum special permit criteria, retail use under 30,000 square feet in the general industry district, seeking to amend the provisions of that zoning bylaw. Article 39, the petitioner is Mary Krikorian. She is seeking to rezone from general business to residential 20, land at 1 Dublin Avenue. These are the articles that have been prepared at this point. They've been submitted to Town Council for review. I have received some comments back from council, and we'll be reviewing that, those comments, and making some modifications as appropriate for the board's meeting on March 11th.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hall. And I would just add, in terms of an update with the board, I know that we recently have convened into executive session for the purposes of discussing eminent domain. It's my expectation we'll convene again on March 11th for the purpose of discussing that. And certainly, Mr. Hall has indicated that he's ready, willing, and able to do whatever we need to do in terms of the warrant, if that's a direction we go. Anything else about the warrant that we need to talk about before we move on? Okay. Onto communications, then. The memorandum from Sharon George, I think, has been presented by way of the agenda item from 710. So our next item, then, would be the board to consider a request of Susan Hendy and Carolyn Priem, PMC Wilmington Kids Ride Coordinators, to close a portion of Cartalane to conduct the annual Pan-Mass Challenge Wilmington Kids Bike Ride on Sunday, May 19th, from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Mr. Hall, do we have anything from, any department heads on that? Objections?
No objections, no.
Okay. Anything from the board, questions, comments, or a motion?
I make, excuse me, I make a motion that we grant the request as submitted.
Second that?
Okay, made in second, and I'll just quickly comment. This is not the first time we've seen this, obviously, and it's been a history of no problems over there. So, and a, and a great cause. Motion's been made in second, it all in favor? It's unanimous? And then our next board to consider item, regarding a request from Leonard Malvone, regarding the use of the town common, was addressed by way of Mr. Omahaoni's presentation and the vote taken earlier. And then same with agenda item number eight, the board to request, consider the request of Sharon George. I apologize. Number eight, board to consider the request of Sharon Georgetown Clerk to appoint election workers for 2013, separate issue. Do we have any questions, comments, or a motion on that?
We're making a motion to appoint the election workers?
Yes, Mr. Hall has recommended, by memorandum dated February 12, the election workers who need to be reappointed, namely Georgia Arbo of 1 Jacob Street, Irene Hoffman of 2 Fletcher Lane, and Barbara Bishop of 42 West Street. And that's, I have that exhausted list of reappointments, Mr. Hall?
Yes, we have the reappointments. These individuals that you just referenced would be, these would be initial appointments.
Okay, and then the reappointments precincts one through six are on the attached?
That's right.
Okay. So I guess our motion should be to make the appointments and reappointments as recommended by the town manager.
So moved?
Seconded.
Made in seconded, anything further? All in favor? It's unanimous? Thank you. Public comments? New business committee reports?
Just like to ask the town manager, Jeff, how we, I'm sure it's on the minds of a lot of folks, how we set with the snow and ice account?
We are going to be close on that one. I'm going to have to talk to Mike Morris, the town accountant. Certainly, the last storm that we had, the big one, really, you know, cost us. So let me get back to you with the next meeting with the specifics. Hopefully, between now and then, we don't have any more major storms, but...
I'm with you.
I think we'll be okay, but it's going to be close.
I just wanted to ask, that's all.
Late but hard, right?
Yeah, you know it, huh? Yeah.
Mr. Semaglia?
Good.
County?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. Important dates, Mr. Hall.
The Finance Committee is going to be meeting tomorrow evening to review the police, public safety, and, police fire and public safety central dispatch budgets. Then on March 5th, the Finance Committee will hold their final meeting to review departmental budgets. That'll be with the Wilmington Public Schools and the Shawshin Tech. March 7th at 7:30 is the next meeting of the Entile Farm Development Committee. March 11th is the next selectmen's meeting. And then on March 19th is the combined Finance Committee Planning Board meeting in the auditorium to review the warrant and budget in detail.
Before entertaining a motion to adjourn, I'd ask if we could have a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing the possible acquisition of real property, not to return to open session.
So moved?
Yes, I will. A motion's been made?
Seconded.
Made in seconded, we'll do a roll call vote, starting down here?
Yes.
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 And chair votes yes, it's unanimous, a roll call vote. Thank you.